I'd like to call the April, uh, PCOS and City School Board Meeting to order. Sophie?
Connor Whitaker will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. He's in Mrs. Heldrich's 3rd grade class. He is in tag reading and it is his favorite class. When he grows up, he wants to be an archaeologist.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take your seat.
Nathan Godsey is a 5th grader in Ms. Ostrander's class. He enjoys building with Legos and is a member of the PES RoboBull's Club. He is also a classroom representative for the SCA. He loves science and all of the fun, cool activities he gets to do at school. When he grows up, he wants to be a scientist or a sports player. Nathan likes to play sports, especially football, basketball, and baseball. He will be reading one of his favorite poems.
It's called "The Voice." There is a voice inside of you that whispers all day long. I feel that this is right for me. I know that this is wrong. No teacher, no preacher, parent, friend, or wise man can decide what's right for you. Just listen to the voice that speaks inside.
Thanks to both of you. Job well done. Next, we'll have our student presentation. The presentation tonight is in recognition of some of the arts that take place at PCOS and Elementary School. While students in Mrs. Heldrich's and Mrs. Ensley's 3rd grade classes are singing, please enjoy the slides of artwork presented around the building at PCOS and Elementary School.
I will be dancing in the flowers. I will be dancing in the rain. I will be dancing to the music, singing as joyous spring represt. Though the long, long winter we just survived with its long, long blankets of night. But the cold, cold winter has now gone past and the sky is filling with light. In the springtime, springtime, oh, spring's eternal. And I think it's a new, a new. In the springtime, springtime, oh, life is eternal. And I will be with you, with you, come the spring. I will be dancing in the clover. I will be dancing with the bees. I will be dancing to the beat, singing as loudly as I please. Though the long, long winter is left behind with its long, long journey to spring. Oh, the cold, cold winter is now gone past and the world is ready to see. In the springtime, springtime, oh, spring's eternal. And I think it's a new, a new. In the springtime, springtime, oh, life is eternal. And I will be with you, with you, come the springtime, springtime, oh, spring's eternal. And I think it's a new, a new. In the springtime, springtime, oh, life is eternal. And I will be with you, with you, come the spring. Come the spring. Come the spring. It's spring!
Thank you very much. That was very well done. And students, we're gonna take a intermission in just a few minutes, so if you can stay with us, I would appreciate it. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not.
And for our recognitions tonight, first up is the presentation to art teachers. And Dr. Parrish, if you would introduce our presenter.
Thank you. If Marie Trice could please come forward from the PCOS and Art League. And also, if we could have our art teachers who are here tonight. Helena Mulligan from the primary school. Marcel Fincher from the elementary. Stephanie Thompson from the middle school. And Paula Bennett and Marie Wielton from the high school.
Hello, my name is Marie Trice. I'm a member of the PCOS and Art League. In this increasingly competitive time, I am thankful to be part of a community that continues to emphasize arts in our schools. Art programs help to develop students' creativity, give them confidence, and in many cases, give students a hobby and an outlet that may keep them from trouble. Things students learn in art classes may also play a vital part in their future careers. I believe historian Eugene Ferguson brought up an important point when he said, "Pyramids, cathedrals, and rockets exist not because of geometry, theories of structure, or thermodynamics, but because they were first a picture, literally a vision in the minds of those who built them." Society is where it is today because people had the perception, the images, and imagination, the creativity that arts provide to make the world the place we live in today. With this being said, it's my privilege and honor, on behalf of the PCOS and Art League, to present the art teachers of each school with a check to be used towards the needs of their art department. We thank you for the time that you put into our students' creativity.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up will be PCPS Teachers of the Year.
Thank you. And as Dr. Carter moves over to present our awards to them, I am thrilled today to be recognizing our Teachers of the Year. And I'd like to start first with our primary school. We have with us this evening our Teacher of the Year from the primary school, Karen Bowen, who had asked to come forward. And I want to recognize her husband, Jay Bowen, who's in the audience and I know provides a tremendous support for her. Karen received her bachelor's degree from Christopher Newport University. She began her teaching career 20 years ago and has taught the last 17 of those years in PCOS. She teaches 1st grade. She has served on the reading committee for the past four years. She is the co-chair of Cory's Book Nook. She mentors new teachers, is cooperating teacher for student teachers, and hosts PHS Teacher Cadets. She's also been a member of the leadership team at the primary school. Karen's ultimate goal is to help her students reach their academic potential by motivating and encouraging them to do their best. This year, her students have a lot of varied needs and special circumstances, and she has realized that teaching is not a one-man job. She writes, "My biggest aha moment this year has been to realize that the resources needed for my students to succeed are right in this school. Teamwork makes a difference in a child's achievement." Please join me once again in congratulating Karen Bowen, our Primary School Teacher of the Year. I ask that Karen stays up there as I bring forward our Elementary School Teacher of the Year. Our Elementary School Teacher of the Year this year is Stacy Godsey. With her this evening are her husband, Jamie, her children Nathan and Hannah, and her parents, Helen and Doug Kellis, who also continue to provide support for her. Stacy received her bachelor's degree from Christopher Newport University and her master's in administration and supervision from the George Washington University. She has eight years of teaching experience, three of those in PCOS, and she currently teaches 5th grade at the elementary school. She served as the cooperating teacher. She was a teacher advisor for the RoboBulls Robotics Club, and she served as a mentor to a new teacher. As a teacher, Stacy believes that relationships are critical. As part of her educational philosophy, she writes, "I take great pride in forming lasting relationships with my students. I want them to believe and know that I am with them every step of the way in the learning ventures they face, now and in the future. I feel that students learn best through real-world experiences which are meaningful to them. One way to achieve this is by giving students a voice in the learning process and by assisting them in finding connections in the curriculum with their own life and interests. By allowing students to bring their own stories, experiences, and ideas into the classroom, students are provided with opportunities to work together, to learn from each other, and to respect each other's differences." Please join me in congratulating Stacy Godsey, our Elementary School Teacher of the Year. Next, I would ask that our Middle School Teacher of the Year, Deborah Swain, come forward. I'd like to recognize in the audience who are this evening, her husband, William Swain, her mother-in-law, Betty Swain, and her friends Eddie and Pam Tyson, all of which continue to support her in her classroom endeavors. Deborah received her bachelor's degree also from Christopher Newport University. She has 12 years of teaching experience and began teaching 6th and 7th grade US history at the middle school in 2005. She is currently department chair at the middle school. She serves as the SCA sponsor. She provides leadership and support for practicum and student teaching students from Longwood University. Deborah's philosophy of teaching is to expect the unexpected. She writes, "Every day, it is a privilege to be around the energy, the excitement, and the chaos that middle schoolers can bring. No two days are ever the same. You have to smile and wonder just what will happen today." Please join me again in congratulating Deborah Swain, our Middle School Teacher of the Year. And our last Teacher of the Year from our high school is Lauren Osborne. In the audience with her this evening is her husband, Andy Osborne, and her parents, Otto and Irene Leopold. Thank you to all of you for supporting her as she works hard with us. Lauren received both her bachelor's and master's degree from James Madison University. She began her teaching career seven years ago at PCOS and High School, where she teaches 11th grade English and AP Language and Composition. She has achieved National Board Certification in English Language Arts for Adolescents and Young Adulthood. She is the department chair for the English Department. She is the co-coach for the girls varsity tennis team. She serves as secretary and PCOS and representative to the Southeastern Virginia National Board Certified Teachers Regional Network. She has been an active member of the Teacher Advisory Council, the BYOD Committee, and is involved in numerous other ways with faculty and students beyond the classroom. As part of her educational philosophy, Lauren writes, "As a teacher, I strive to establish a safe, consistent, and engaging environment for young minds. My philosophy means that I provide opportunities. Each day, I want every student to come into class and have the tools and resources necessary for success. I vary my teaching strategies to accommodate for all learning styles. I support students however I can and continue to challenge them within their ability levels with rigorous expectations both in their written work and analytical skills." Please join me in congratulating Lauren Osborne, the High School Teacher of the Year. First, I'd ask that Mr. Rex Evans come forward from the Kiwanis Club of PCOS, because he's here also to recognize our Teachers of the Year.
Good evening. I'm Rex Evans, and I have the privilege of serving as the president of the Kiwanis Club of PCOS this year. Kiwanis is an international organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world one child and one community at a time. We have 109 club members here in PCOS. We strive to do a lot of activities that support our school system and support our community. On behalf of the members of the club, it's my privilege to present a $250 check to each of the Teachers of the Year. I might add that there are no strings attached to those checks. Congratulations.
I want to once again congratulate all four of our Teachers of the Year. They do an outstanding job every day in our classrooms for all of our students and truly make a difference for children's lives, as well as for those that they work with in the school division, to include their superintendent. We have to, though, each year, pick a teacher who will be the Division Teacher of the Year who will represent us in the regional and state competitions for Teacher of the Year. And this is done by a committee of individuals from across the school division. This year, our division-wide committee has selected Lauren Osborne as our School Division Teacher of the Year.
Outstanding, and thanks to all of you for the work that you do throughout the year for our kids and for the community, and instilling in them good habits and building those relationships that they'll carry with them forever. And I believe now it's time for a break. We'll take a short break so we can come out and talk with some of you.
Thank you.
Love having you.
What are the words?
A fantastic place to raise your kids, phenomenal school.
Thank you. Invite all your friends with kids in.
Yeah.
Who do I talk to about getting your baseball light changed out for free? I'm trying to get it done for free at the baseball field. It's not working.
The city. Call the PCOS and City, or if you email me, I'll get you somebody to talk to.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move into our presentations and reports. First up, financial update with Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. Well, our budget's been forwarded to the city, so we're waiting for the city to take action on that. We expect that to occur sometime in mid-May. We're also waiting for the state to certify final average daily membership for the year. That should occur sometime in mid-May also. So for the finance report this evening, what I wanted to do is I wanted to update the board on a few benefits and services that we offer and have for our employees. First of all, it's our open enrollment for employee benefits. This is the time for our employees to select their health, dental, and supplemental benefits for next school year. Excuse me. Open enrollment kicks off the week of May 11th and runs through June 12th. Employees have a couple of options in which to enroll. They can meet with an agent representative who will walk them through the process, or if they're feeling really bold, they can do the self-directed option and use the online enrollment system. We'll be scheduling optional group benefit meetings for employees after school, and this is when we bring our health and dental and supplemental benefit experts to provide just a brief overview of the benefits, and then also gives the employees an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. The Employee Assistance Program, this is a benefit that PCPS has offered for a number of years. The EAP is confidential counseling services that's offered through Optima, and it's available to all of our employees, whether you're full-time or part-time. It's also available to the in-home dependents. This program offers short-term counseling services, which is generally four to six sessions, and it's for personal, family, or work-related issues. Just last week, PCPS hosted an educational specialist from the Virginia retirement system. This session was targeting employees that are within five years of retirement. We had about 25 employees that participated in the meeting, and we also had a couple of folks from the city. Something else that's going on with VRS is the hybrid educational counseling. VRS is VRS is reaching out to localities and school divisions to reach out to these new hybrid employees. And if you recall, in 2012, the General Assembly passed pension reform legislation, and as part of that, they created this new retiree group called the Hybrid Employee. Any employee that's hired after January 1, 2014, that doesn't have any prior VRS experience would fall into this category. And their retirement benefit is significantly different from the non-hybrid employees. So for the non-hybrid employees, we have a defined benefit, which is a guaranteed retirement benefit based on your average final compensation, your number of years of service, and the age in which you retire, and that's multiplied by retirement factor. Well, with the hybrid employees, they have a defined benefit and a defined contribution. So with the pension reform, the responsibility was shifted from the employer and from the state to the employee, and this is what we see now in private business. As part of that defined contribution plan for the hybrid employee, there's an option for them to contribute an additional 4% of their salary, and if they do that, then the employer matches 2.5%. What VRS is telling us statewide is that there are a number of these new hybrid employees that are not taking advantage of the optional 4% contribution and that free match, 2.5% match. So what they're trying to do is they're trying to get ahead of this problem. We're starting to see a recovery from the economic crisis over the past six years. We're starting to see some localities and school divisions start to offer raises. So they want to have these educational sessions to get in front of employees as these raises come forward, that they can hopefully encourage the employees to set aside just a portion of that to start saving for that optional contribution. That concludes my report this evening.
Any comments, questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up, operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, school board, Dr. Parrish, and my safety advisor. This evening, I'd like to provide you with an overview of some of the activities that transpired over the spring recess, namely in the area of a security grant and maintenance. In 2014, 2015, Governor McAuliffe continued the two-year trend of offering K-12 schools an opportunity to avail themselves of grant money to be used for security equipment. And we did so two consecutive cycles, and we've put that to very good use. These grants are designed to enhance the security of schools. We've been working on this, as you well know, and as any parent who goes to a school and teachers who work in our school and children know, for decades. And our schools are safe and becoming safer, and this grant helps us enhance that. So what did we do exactly? What form were those enhancements? This year, we were able to add cameras to the primary school and the elementary school, and that included coverage of areas that we felt were important: the bus loop at the primary school, the parent drop-off at the primary school, and some of the playgrounds, as well as converting from analog cameras at the elementary school to IP cameras. Then at PMS and PHS, two years ago, we changed all the interior doors to one key, so that Principal Pirelli and the Assistant Principal have one key, and they can quickly access a door, which is wonderful for numerous reasons. This year, we did the same thing at the high school, and no one any longer looks like the ghost of Christmas past shaking keys as they walk down the hallway. We also got radios. We enhanced our radios over the two years of grants. We now have radios that we use between schools, within our schools, for transportation. It's an integral part of our crisis plan, but it's also part of our day-to-day communication. Schools communicate with the buses, the buses communicate among themselves, the dispatcher and buses dispatcher to schools. It's been one of the wonderful things that we've done over the few years in the way of transportation and safety. And then lastly, we now have in all four schools our ID badge keyless entry. So access is controlled, the building envelope is much more secure, enhanced, if you will. You only get in when you're supposed to. We no longer, if we lose a metal key, we don't compromise the envelope of the entire building. This is a big boon for safety. With this system, all four schools now have it, and as we go, we'll be able to let a teacher who loses his or her badge in or deny access to a badge that's lost immediately using our smartphones. Another wonderful enhancement. Over the spring break, we were busy with custodial services, as you can imagine, but we also had a lot of other activities. Maintenance, as you know, has to convert two of our buildings that are either heat or air conditioning. We had to convert to AC. Of course, when we did it, it was cold. We converted to AC. It never fails. We convert, and everybody wants it. But now, everybody's glad we have the AC on. We also did a number of remediation projects, which really can best be done when there are less students and faculty and staff running around the buildings doing the important work that they do. And some of the work that we did involved concrete remediation at the primary schools. Some sidewalks needed to be replaced. We had an area under the portico that had checked miserably and frankly was a safety hazard for tripping, and that's been rectified. We also repaired the gym floor. Again, that's something you can't do when students are running around. And we added, speaking of running around, we added some fences, because long before children become academic athletes, they become runners just spontaneously when they're about this big. And what we did is we enclosed some areas to keep children from running out of a playground into the parent drop-off. And that's just some of the activities we did this break, and that concludes the report.
Any questions, comments there? Thank you very much, sir. And Dr. Colley with the instructional update.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. You'll remember earlier this year, we talked a little bit about SOL reform in that we have eliminated five of our SOL tests: the grade-three science test, the grade-three history test, the grade-five writing test, and then the U.S. History I and II tests. And we've been busy this year working with teachers to look at the ways we assess those subjects and make sure that we are providing alternatives to those assessments. But this evening, I'd like to share with you the next phase of SOL reform for our schools and students. And that was some action taken by the board. I suspect you read that, and the community read that in the paper, that in late March, the Virginia Board of Education adopted a resolution allowing our students in grades three through eight to now take expedited retakes on their non-writing standards of learning tests. And so you might know, for our end-of-the-course, our high school students who are taking these courses for credit and taking the SOL test, for years, they've been taking an expedited retake after some remediation, and they're able to recover that credit. Now, we're going to be able to look at what that might mean for students in grades three through eight in terms of expedited retakes. And that's going to happen under certain criteria only. The student must have passed the course associated with the SOL test, and one of the following conditions must apply: the student failed the test in the 375 to 399 range, and that's the range we use right now for expedited retakes for end-of-course, or they could have failed the test by any margin and have some very extenuating circumstance that might warrant retesting. An example might be, you know, a student has done well in the class all year, has shown proficiency, and receives maybe some traumatic news the night before, and they sort of go on and go to school and take the test, and then we're surprised, you know, they did not do well, and that might be an extenuating circumstance. And the third way is they didn't sit for the regularly scheduled test for a legitimate reason. And that might be a student who had an extended illness and missed the entire testing window. Then we would be able to offer them an expedited retake. In the second and third cases, where there are extenuating circumstances or legitimate reasons that a student didn't sit for the test, those cases would come all the way up to the superintendent for approval in terms of whether they met the criteria. But at the school level, we will be looking at students who failed in that 375 to 399 range, and then pulling out students who may have extenuating circumstances or others to send on up here. But the state has said, given the newness of this, the age of the students, there are some additional conditions on these retakes. And the biggest one is that the parents will be notified, and in fact, our plan with our youngest students is that then the parents will be able to talk to the student. We are not going to notify our youngest students, "You didn't pass a test," but we'll talk to the parents, and we will let the parents know that there's an opportunity to retake the test. We'll also let them know at grades three through eight, if it's not an eighth grader taking geometry, algebra, we're not talking about those, but that not retaking the test is not going to impact their academics, it's not going to impact their grade. So it is a choice, and it is an opt-in. It's not opt-out, it's opt-in. You, as a parent, have the choice to let your student retake, and then we'll also be getting permission. And that permission may be in writing, it may be over the phone. We're going to be very flexible with that and try to meet our parents where it works best for them. So what is our plan, then, for the expedited retakes? Well, we're going to test, as usual, this spring, and we will put information, as we always do, out on our website about SOL testing. The schools do a fantastic job of sending calendars home and letting you know when your students test. And then what we'll also do is add to our webpage information about the expedited retakes now, and then we will notify parents in writing when the retake becomes available, if their student doesn't pass, and then follow up over the phone. We will be providing some remediation, so we're making sure that our retakes are falling at different times in the testing window, and we will base that on student need. What's very nice about what technology has done for us with these expedited retakes and getting us the information immediately is that teachers will know which strand, which question student missed, and also the level of difficulty. So they will be able to provide some really tailored remediation and then offer those expedited retakes. And that's our plan in a nutshell for expedited retakes in this second phase of SOL reform this spring. Thank you. Questions?
The retakes, is there like a specific date, or did I hear you say it was based on student need?
I think it's, right. So this is new to us with this age range. So some of our initial thoughts are these: some of the students, we're going to look and say, wow, they hit 375, and we see there's a strand that they missed in math, and we really need to tailor some remediation. So that student might have a week to 10 days before they retake. We might look at another student and think, oh, my goodness, child has been off the charts all year. How did this happen? And find out that, you know, scared, froze up. And so we really do want to be able to look at each child individually. We're not, we don't anticipate saying, these are all the students who didn't pass, and we're going to put them here for this remediation and then send them through, because we have pretty good data that shows that doesn't work. We really do want to look at each individual. We ran the numbers to look at what this would have looked like last year for us, and in any given class, it tended to be 11 students at the most in a class. We were looking across a grade level and saying, well, we could pull out students for different things. Total, I'm sorry, it's not kindergarten, three through eight, we were in the 80s for any student who would have been eligible, and that would have been for math, and then in reading, it was just right at 90. So we're not talking about tremendous numbers of students either. But we really are seriously discussing how to look at the individual test results and the students.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, ma'am. See, next up is our consent agenda. Mr. Cass, would you like to take us through that?
Yes, the consent agenda tonight is the following three items: A through C, approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, and authorization to change appropriation in accordance with the attached request.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And could call for a vote, please, Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. And other matters of consideration, first, approval of minutes of the March regular meeting and work session enclosed. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Abstain.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1, abstention.
And next, consideration of approval of minutes of budget, public hearing, and special meeting. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Abstain.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1, abstention.
Thank you, ma'am. And consideration of approval of Special Education Plan School Year 2015, 2016, Dr. Parrish?
Yes, this is the plan that we bring forward to each year, and this is essentially the agreement between us, the school division, and VDOE as to how we'll implement the IDEA law, which is the federal law that oversees students with disabilities, and also the Virginia regulations that we are also required to meet. And once that agreement is approved by you all, then funds will be dispersed to us based upon that. So I recommend approval of the special education grant as presented to you this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there about the special education plan? All right, Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote again, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. And then consideration of approval of the Perkins Grant School Year 2015, 2016, Dr. Parrish?
Yes, this is our grant application for federal dollars attached to CTE programs. And we're asking you to approve that this evening. I think just of note to you, and so the community understands, as you see in the reading file that's attached, we received just over $16,000 to support CTE programs for Career Technology Education programs. So just to put it all in perspective, it's not a lot of money that we're receiving from the federal government, but we do have for you the actual plan that we have to submit to get those funds to the grant.
Do I have a motion to approve the Perkins Grant?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions there?
No, I wouldn't add a comment, but I made those same remarks pretty much at the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee in Richmond, that some of your smaller school systems get, we get a little bit of money, but it takes people to administrate that grant, and it does take extra work, but we unfortunately have to get every dollar we can get for our children.
Good point. Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
And next item, consideration of approval of the AP Edition Western Civilization 2015... And next item, consideration of approval of the AP Edition Western Civilization 2015 textbook or instruction at PHS for AP European History. Would you like to speak to that?
Sure, just a reminder, good for our community to know that that Advanced Placement course has been redesigned by the College Board. So this textbook that we're bringing forward to you for your approval this evening does support the revisions that were made to that course, and we've now altered our curriculum. So that's why that spring brought forward to you. It does have some online materials associated with it as well.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of Western Civilization 2015 edition?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments there?
I'd like to thank the teachers who researched and helped to find that textbook. It may have been recommended, but we still have to take efforts to make sure it's what we want. So I appreciate the extra effort they went to.
Anybody else? Thank you. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
And last item for consideration, I have four proclamations that I'll go through that are up for consideration for approval. The first is Military Child Month. And Virginia has the highest number of active-duty, school-aged children in the nation. Thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving the armed forces of the United States, both on active duty and in the National Guard and Reserves. These children are a source of pride and honor to us all, and it is only fitting that we take the time to recognize what they contribute. And next up is Teacher Appreciation Week. Teachers continue to influence us long after our school days end. We honor the dedicated men and women who lend their passion and skills to educating our children because we believe teaching is one of the most valuable professions in the country. The third is School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week. And the hard-working staff who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children, excuse me, through their daily interactions and their support, and we appreciate all that they do. And last up is School Nurse Appreciation Day. School nurses are professional nurses who advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by providing a critical safety net for our nation's children. School nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by developing and providing programs and leadership. So those are our four proclamations. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? All quiet tonight.
All good stuff.
All right, Ms. Reimers, you're up.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
And Dr. Parrish, would you like to kick off our communications, please?
Yes, I would ask that our parents and any guardians who are watching us this evening take a few minutes to take a survey that was emailed to them within the last week. This survey is enabling us to get some information and data as to how our community, most importantly, our parents would feel about us implementing alternate bus routes when we have inclement weather. In other words, we might be able to make some changes to our bus routes and get kids into school rather than leaving them at home, especially at these times when we've had numerous days in a row out because of a storm. So we really need their input, though. Our decisions will be based on their comfort with us because we would need their support. So a phone call will be going out to our parents from our principals tomorrow evening, and they'll probably get another follow-up email from us with the link. You can also get to the link to the survey through our news items on all of our school webpages and our division page. So the survey closes April 30th, so just hoping that people will go in and take that survey for us in the coming days. Also, just a reminder that you, as board members, have a joint meeting with City Council on Monday. That will be here in the council chambers. And part of the discussion will be about budget. But fortunately, our city manager, Mr. Wheeler, has included our request of $140,000 in additional funding from the city in his budget. So I suspect it will be a great conversation on Monday. And finally, I certainly had the opportunity to thank and congratulate our four Teachers of the Year this evening. But I want to also take that time to thank all of our teachers who, as you know, work so hard with our kids every day and make such a difference for us. So it would be great if we could have all of them in here at the same time, but certainly the four that they chose to represent them were great examples of what we have going on in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sophie? At the primary school this week, or this month, first graders enjoyed a visit to NASA, or by NASA, April 2nd. Students learned about space travel, the Earth, the moon, and Mars. They were even visited by an astronaut dressed in an actual space suit. Students and teachers learned a lot about the hardships and the future of space travel. Last Wednesday, the students and staff at the primary school celebrated Purple Up Day in honor of our military families, students, and staff wore purple to school. At the elementary school, they're getting ready for their annual Festival of the Arts on Tuesday, April 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00. Every student will have a piece of their artwork displayed. Third-grade classes are scheduled to sing throughout the evening. We always had a lot of fun, and this is a Bring Your Parent event. Our fifth-grade classes have been kayaking in the Chesapeake Bay, and this is always a fun learning experience. Our third-quarter awards recognition assemblies are the Friday, April 24th. Please check the school website for the class schedule. It's always a wonderful time to celebrate our students' successes. We hope to see many family members there. In the middle school, report cards were issued to the students today. The spring band concert will be held May 7th, and the spring chorus concert will be held May 21st. SOL prep and review has started, and transportation after school is provided on Mondays and Wednesdays. At the high school, the PHS Key Club has participated in both the Second Annual Cerebral Palsy Awareness Walk and the Red Cross Blood Drive in the last few weeks. Our drama club will be performing the Spring Musical on Friday, May 1st at 7:00, and on Saturday, May 2nd at 2:00 and at 7:00. Our prom is May 9th and will be held at the Mariners Museum. The after-prom event is scheduled immediately following the prom. On May 16th, the Leo Club will be having a talent show fundraising for Project Lifesaver. Sophomores have just placed class ring orders, and seniors have picked up caps and gowns. AP testing begins on May 4th, SOL testing begins on May 13th, and CTE industry certification testing begins May 26th. After-school tutoring has already started for the upcoming SOL tests. The Odyssey of the Mine team placed second in the state competition and advanced to the world competition in Michigan in May. And the SCA is having a tailgate for the baseball team this Friday. They're inviting the whole community, and there will be hot dogs and food, and it's to support our baseball team in their season.
Excellent. That's all.
Very nice. Thank you, ma'am. And Ms. Rollins?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Dr. Carter. No comment tonight.
Ms. Whitaker?
Not tonight, thank you.
I told you, y'all, quiet tonight for some reason. Y'all gonna unload in there, I'll bet. Ms. Sidner?
I would just like to congratulate all the Teachers of the Year again. And also, would like to say, the parent survey is very short, so take the time. I think it's only two questions, and you can write a comment if you want, but if not, it's extremely short and won't take you any time at all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Melton?
As usual, I'll have a couple. Dr. Carter and I were able to meet with a group of PCOS and students down at the shipyard, and I believe it was March 20th, Friday, March 20th, and they had come to the SNAEMI Boat Competition, which is the Society of Naval Architects and Marine Engineers. Jennifer Romanelli had her nine students with her, and I believe they placed in the top six, and there were 38 teams. Four boats that were submitted from PCOS was More Often Than Not, Net Gain, Real Easy, and Tied in Knots. And I believe at least two of those were in the top categories. And perhaps we'll be getting a presentation for them and show us what all they did. But they presented very well, and we enjoyed having all the competition there. Unfortunately, it's the second year they've gotten real close to winning to have one of the four boats that are built. Special Education Advisory Committee met last week, and there was a really good presentation by Trish Boyle, the PCOS and High School Special Education Department Chairperson. And part of her things went over the Applied Studies Diploma, Workplace Readiness Skills, and the I'm Determined Career Interest Inventory, where the students actually participate in what they want to do after high school. There is a commercial, so wait for it. Any parent interested in serving on the statewide Special Education Advisory Committee, please contact Dr. Feldman at the School Board Office. That is a wonderful opportunity for our parents to get involved. It does not really cost you anything. They do pay for transportation up and back, and your input would be very valuable to the statewide committee.
Thanks, sir.
That concludes.
Mr. Cass?
Thank you very much. I would like to just echo the comments about the teachers and the incredible four that we saw tonight, and they represent what an incredible group of teachers that we have. So congratulations and great job, well done.
Thanks, sir. I'd also like to, of course, congratulate the Teachers of the Year and especially Ms. Osborne for System Teacher of the Year. I can speak firsthand that she certainly made an impression on my oldest son, and he took the skills that he learned partially in her class and has applied them at JMU. And he's doing well. And one of the teachers up there, I can't remember, it was the second teacher, I guess, from the elementary school. And she mentioned something about forming those lifelong relationships. And when I spoke with Ms. Osborne after the presentation, she mentioned that my son, who was in her class five, six years ago, actually sent her a message and as an example of that relationship that these teachers build with these kids and with the influence that they have on their lives. And it is long-lasting. And everybody sitting here and whoever's listening can think back right now to some teachers who really, really made an impression on them and their lives. So we just really appreciate the work that you do. And these four outstanding teachers tonight are representative of the faculty that we are blessed to have on board. One of those, Ms. Teroux at PCOS and Middle School, the play that she put on was phenomenal. That is a brave woman because the songs were hard, it was long, but it went off great. And I think she did just an amazing job. And thanks to the kids who sang the song about spring tonight, that was awesome. It made me want to just be outside, and I was thinking that, yeah, what a beautiful day to come in and sing that song about. Of course, the energy level, teachers hanging there, not too much longer, and you can release them for the summers. But anyway, I guess that there are my comments. And do we have any material for board review?
We do have in front of you the city manager's proposed budget for the city of PCOS, which includes our budget request.
Thank you, ma'am. And with that, we will be adjourning into the work session where we're going to discuss strategic plans, survey feedback, capital improvement plan enrollment, and several other items on our agenda. So with that, we will adjourn.